You've got mail.
I call the order. I have a statement we want to read and then we're going to have a moment of silence. The Park County Council wishes to take a moment to remember longtime journalist, editor, and friend Larry Beamas who passed away recently. We were, we are all shocked and saddened by Larry's passing. Larry will always be remembered for his fairness, his wit, his humor, and his kindness. The council extends its condolences to Larry's family, his colleagues at the Park County Sentinel, and his many friends and neighbors. He will be greatly missed by all of us. We'll have a moment of silence. Okay. Okay, lady, I'm gonna let lady go first. She needs to go, so lady.
Um, you asked me to send back just another revisit. Some things are going. They're not improving. The prison is a big part of our numbers. It's, it's bad out there.
Do you think that's what's really forced us into red? Or, I know it's a whole matrix. It's just not the cases.
Um, no, I certainly didn't help. Because I get, we don't test them, obviously, so the red, and as you can tell, most of the counties around are now red. Like I said, it's an algorithm composed of a rolling average of positivity and numbers of cases over portions of the last two weeks. So my guess is we may stay there for a while. What they're really looking for now is vaccines. And they're going to, what I was told on Tuesday is that they should roll out to the hospitals next week on the 16th. Nothing's written in stone, but that's what they anticipate right now. And they anticipate that the next batch will roll out January 4th approximately, and they want us up and running for the clinic around that time. They're trying to deal away with phases because they're all gonna kind of start overlapping. First batch is gonna go to healthcare workers, the people that are actually working with positive patients, so nurses, EMS, and people at testing sites. And then shortly thereafter, it will go to fire, police, healthcare workers, and depending on how many we get, starting essential personnel, those at high risk, the elderly. So they want, the state wants the clinic to run 24/7. I explained yesterday that was not even remotely feasible, that they would like us to work with other counties, and we were told this is our time to shine. So I'd like somebody else to shine for a while, but that's, that's what they would like. They would also like our testing site open on Christmas Eve, so I have conveyed that to you in hospital. I don't know if that will happen, but Dr. Box would like no testing sites closed for longer than 24 hours. We do, we do have the rapid tests, and everybody wants it, so we've had to kind of, you're supposed to have been symptomatic within the last seven days to qualify or be a first responder. So we're going through those pretty rapidly. And so our new nurse came, is coming, I assume she's to be there at nine this morning, and Cindy's gonna be here today and tomorrow to work with her a little bit, and then she'll start Monday with her 29 hours. So as the messenger, I did hold an update, and I guess the health board would like me to relay, that it's their hope that she can maintain that 29 hours for the foreseeable future, because she's gonna have to take a very large role in the clinic, because it has to be, you've gotta be licensed. You've gotta either be a nurse, or a retired nurse, or an EMT, somebody that's allowed to give vaccines. It can't just be regular volunteers, because that would be bad. And we, it's my understanding we would probably get the Moderna vaccine, because we don't have the ultra cold storage.
And it's a two-shot, are most of them a two-shot, the way I understand it, correct?
Twenty and days between, and it can't be longer than 30, so.
And they're adamant that you get the second shot, I, my, my understanding.
Yes, yes. Otherwise, I don't know that they would be much safer.
Community or whatever.
And they haven't even really determined how long the vaccine is going to be good for, because the people that have gotten it in the trial haven't been out long enough. They, they said they won't really, you know, full efficacy for a year. They can guarantee, or they can guarantee that it should be 95% effective for at least three months.
It's not fair at all.
No, and I, and I don't know, I think the second shot maybe pushes it to six.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
So basically, you would, what you want from us, or what the health board wants, is to try to extend out the nurses' time period then, and I assume we could pay that from Health Trust. I mean, that is a.
Chris, has, Chris has found perhaps a number?
I'm gonna have to talk to him. I gave him some numbers of what we've already spent on overage on this nurse situation.
And I, I gave him some other information that I think might add some more money to that.
Okay.
I do want it, I want an end date, even if we change the end date. I don't want a foreseeable future situation, because then it ends up being lost in there. Um, you know, so I, I would propose that we look at it three months at a time. Um, you know, and we're, I absolutely agree that we've gotta keep this going forward for this time period. It's not, this isn't over by any stretch of imagination. We all know that. Uh, we said to the end of the year the first time. All right, we're almost there. Um, I would propose that we push it through March at this point, um, and review in March if things are better or.
Or worse.
Or worse, or worse, you know, that's absolutely right. Um, then we can make another decision at that point, because we leave it completely open-ended. It just never goes away.
And, and the new nurse will understand that she cannot accumulate.
Yeah, this is, you know, the comp time in this part-time position is no, no more.
And you feel like that you can, that everybody can live with that? We'll just review it in three months and see where we are, just like you've done with us today. I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable to ask that, so we'll, we'll know more, hopefully. We'll know more. Uh, then I think we can, we definitely understand you need the help, and we've gotta have, obviously, people ready to give the vaccine, the vaccine if we get it.
Now, are you working with the ambulance service on this, right? I mean, this is all tied in together, and they're, the EMTs are eligible to give the vaccine, so we're not just expecting the nurse to give the vaccine to everybody in this county. So, um, and my understanding was that there was possibility of a, of a super cold storage freeze, or whatever you wanna call it.
I don't think we're ever gonna, if, they told us that no local health department would ever get the ultra cold vaccine. That's only gonna go to the hospitals, and she is in the process of getting the one that will let us store what we, what we will get. Just waiting on it, and hopefully it will be here before the vaccines are out.
So we should approve then, I guess, through March then? Or do you wanna, do you wanna just see how it all works out with the money, or how do you wanna handle the money?
Well, we'll just have to do some, we're gonna have to do some additional after the first of the year.
Have to do additional, okay.
We're gonna do an additional for the.
Well, you tell them we're good through March, come back, report, and see where we go from there, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all that you're doing, so.
Good times.
It is good times, isn't it? Yep. Okay, we're gonna go on to the tax abatements, because Mr. Wildman is with us and waiting. Mr. Wildman, are you there?
Well, I am, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go right on to the, um, to the four abatements that are in front of us for final approval. Um, would you like to say anything, or briefly go over that you did, I think, advertise in the newspaper, which is required?
Yes, we sent the notice to the newspaper, and, uh, just to refresh you, these are four different resolutions. One has to do with Rockville Properties and tax abatement on, on, um, it proposed improvements it would make to the ShopCo, what I call the ShopCo property that they acquired. Uh, another one is the Rockville Properties, and that is for abatement under the vacant building provisions in the, uh, in the law. Uh, and ShopCo was qualified as a vacant building before they acquired it, uh, asking to take advantage of that provision as well. Uh, the other two has to do with personal property abatement for Scott Pet. Uh, one has to do with, uh, new equipment they're proposing to put into the ShopCo building. They're gonna be leasing that from Rockville Properties, and they'll be putting in, uh, new, new, uh, water housing and manufacturing equipment there. And then the second has to do with installation of new equipment in their, uh, Scott Pet current location.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's good. Cindy Todd is here too. Cindy, do you wanna say anything, or does?
Well, first of all, I wanna thank, um, Mr. Wildman. He was great to work with to get to the paperwork, and also thank the council for their consideration of this abatement. And of course, we worked, um, quite a while on this, uh, to bring more investment into Park County and, and additional jobs, so just on behalf of partnership, we, we thank you all for, for your time on that.
Okay.
I have one clarification, and maybe Mr. Wildman can help answer this. There's, what is the, the first, uh, the first year these abatements would be, uh, applied? Would that be, uh, a 21 pay 22 tax cycle?
That, that would be my understanding, yes.
Now, that, of course, makes the assumption that the personal property would be installed and operational by the end of the year.
Yes, correct, correct.
Is that expected to happen?
Um, I don't know, is Nathan in attendance today at the meeting?
No.
No, he, no.
Okay.
I'm gonna see him.
My understanding is that, yes, that that would be occurring, uh, over this, the next several months. Uh, the, uh, as I said, Rockville has already acquired property, and.
Yeah, the real ones are pretty simple.
Yeah, and the, uh, and I know they're anxious to get, uh, moving on, uh, the installation and rehabilitation work that they wanna do there.
All right, now Nathan can work that out with Cindy and the assessor to get the exact date for the, the two personal ones, because you can't, you can't abate what hasn't been taxed yet, and it's not taxed until it's put in to service.
Exactly.
Or it's just been put into service, so they can work that out after the fact.
There's, there's dates listed on the SB 1 forms on the back of those packets that may answer that, but I will talk to Nathan later today.
Yes, and.
Work it out.
Work that one out.
Okay. Is there any other questions on the, the four resolutions? Do we have resolution numbers for these?
Yeah, we have numbers. 27 is the first one.
I think we're just, we're just moving second all in one swoop, they're all same.
All the same project.
You're gonna do 27, 28, 29, 30?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe we approve all four of them.
Most have been made in seconds to approve the abatements for Scott Pet and the Rockville Properties all in favor.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Mr. Wildman, we've approved them, we'll be signing them, and so, um, I, we appreciate your attendance and your, uh, helping all of this, along with Cindy, as in, um, and our counsel attorney, Mr. Clutter.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Yep, all right, thank you, bye.
Bye-bye.
We'll, we'll sign these after, that way we won't hold the meeting up. Okay, department heads, Mr. Mace?
Just a couple things. Uh, one, just wanna again commend, uh, Liddy was just here, and, and that, uh, incident management group, I mean, people don't understand how much work, how much time they put into it, that big emergency management, Chris O'Brien, uh, ambulance service for Peter Landzone, uh, Liddy's there, Sheriff is there. It's just an awful time having to deal with it. The most frustrating part is getting people to do what they need to be doing. Uh, have you noticed on the map, we are marked as a, um, highlighted, only one in the state highlighted, and we are highlighted because most of ours are coming from a congregate setting, although part of that is from the prison. We are still having several events still, weddings and those types of things that occur, and we have, uh, flights and those things, so, um, that's, that's what that highlight on the map is, is concerned with. Commissioners are going to go to an appointment-only situation, not gonna have closed meetings, although now we're allowed by the state to go back to electronic, but we're gonna, we're gonna limit how many people will be in here. I've asked emergency management to make that determination, it comes down to about, have room for about 12 people. Three of those would be commissioners, and then two in the auditor's office, and the, and the attorney, of course. And then we would have, I've asked John, and John's confirmed that he would continue a live stream, so that would be available. And then for the other department heads, we'd have to come in, and just, we'd have four seats, four seats left, so if we had more than the highway department, the sheriff's department, he didn't come in, then we would have to make a, make time to appointments for those. And that'd be probably going into the foreseeable future. Again, we don't know how long this situation's gonna last, but even though we don't know that that would have much effect, I think it's important that we, as a county, make the effort to show that we are doing what we can in instances that we can, because we can't control every aspect. But other than that, I think everything is, uh, moving on. You know, we had the courthouse, uh, warning work done, although they did not get to the top, and, and we have been in constant contact with, uh, Jim LeVos from the company who did that, to try to get them to get the lift here so we can get that, to get that done, so hopefully we'll be able to extend that warning because of their lack of able to get that done, and of course, they can't do the repair work that's required, um, as a result of the first survey that we had done, but other than that, I think everything's functioning okay. I think that's impressed.
Um, you guys have been wanting, or asked the attorney, I think, to work on the comp time policy. Have we ever finally got that sorted out?
He's still working on that. I, I think, actually, I think the rules exist, they have just not been followed for the last 20 years. I, I think we had department heads that collected overtime, I mean, the comp time when they shouldn't have been getting comp time, and, and so we will come up with some.
Well, we didn't, from our perspective, we just need, I don't think any of us really care what the rules are, but we just need to have laid out to where we can understand, or when everyone can understand them and know what.
And the more we go through the handbook, we find more conflicts in some language. We're one, one place to say one thing, another place to say something else, so we're definitely working on that.
Working on that.
We're trying to clean all that up.
That would be wonderful. That would be wonderful.
Did you guys adopt the resolution for using option two for this CARES Act money?
Yes, yeah.
It's signed and done, then?
Yes.
Yep, that was a couple meetings going back, I think.
Well, I knew you guys worked through it, but I didn't know if you'd ever prepared it and done it.
Okay, any other questions for Jim? Okay, Sheriff?
Uh, we ended the year at $203,218.50 for VOC and out of town holding. That's still higher than, I think, 2011 was the last time that's ever been below that, so. And we've served about 5,000 meals through the end of November. Commissary, uh, currently is set at $45,043, but sometime next week, we should be depositing another $10,000 in that, so it's still doing real good. Uh, we just purchased a 2014 black Pursuit rated four-by-four Tahoe at 84,000 miles. Um, picked it up at a Chevy dealership in Fort Wayne, we've been there with, 10,000 of it came from budget, and then 5,800 came from the commissary, but it was outfitted with lights, and it's basically ready to hit the road, except for the home graphics we put on it, so that'd be a reserved car. And I think currently no staff in COVID, nobody in quarantine, and still luckily, we haven't had any inmates infected.
I assume you're still trying to limit the in and out out there absolutely as much as possible?
Yeah, we, we relaxed it earlier a little bit, but now we're back in the, yeah, telling the public, in the building, or in the lobby, and the out cuts now on some of the incarcerations that can issue citations or summons at the scene without bringing them into the bill.
Well, I would certainly enforce it if they don't have official business out there, they shouldn't be out there.
Yeah.
You know, we can't, if we get that in that inmate population, well, that's gonna, you know, that won't be good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be, definitely be hard to control.
Yeah.
They got a bad deal thoroughly.
They've got it, and Vigo County's got it.
Come in here and sell a few, and sell just this week.
Now, that'd be, yeah, well, I'd highly encourage you to, you know, they don't have a reason, reason to be there, or why they shouldn't. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Katie?
Um, cyclical reassessment will be done by Friday, so we're ahead of schedule, which is a great thing. We had a non-compliance on our 2021 real estate, um, I've kinda given you an update on that. We're in, the work's on a fix on that. Otherwise, everything's going real good. We'll start new construction. We have to wait till January 1st, because it's gotta be whatever's there as of January 1st. We'll get the new construction done and be headed into ratio studies. Good times.
Good, good, good. It all starts over again, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes, yes, so. Janie, did you have something back there?
Randy's there.
Oh, Randy's there? Well, send him, send him in. I can't see back there.
I put you there after.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I don't know if you heard or not, believe that, or a smooth cross.
I figured Mace had mentioned that, that was why he didn't say anything about it, so.
I don't know. He's gonna take all the glory.
He always takes all the credit, you know? I wondered that.
Somebody had to say it.
Yeah. You'll be in trouble later.
Oh, probably. We have awarded $938,990 and $76.
That's wonderful.
Yep, of course, the total cost was $1,002.51, $87.68.
That will be with our match, I assume, with our match.
Yeah, our match was $312.996, $92.
Well, that's wonderful.
Yep, it is.
Wonderful.
And we, uh, got a head start on next year's projects. We've rounded up Cardinal Road. We got three layers of stone on yet, so we have all the coasting over there pretty good. I'm afraid we'll not see any sore spots in it. Come straight, you know? We'll see it, take a seat. And, uh, all the rest of it will understand.
How is, are you still down on the help? I mean, are you, how many openings do you have, or?
I think, uh, three or four.
Are there, are they truck drivers, or what are they?
운way operators, crew laborers.
So if we can get the word out why that you're looking for help with.
Yeah, we've advertised.
Oh, I know, I see, I see your advertisements, but we keep trying to.
We advertise again, but.
Yeah, so, well, that's good. So far, you haven't had to spy on any snow, so that's a good thing, I guess.
Oh, we don't.
Yeah.
And our new truck should be in hopefully before Christmas. Get some air, tap the bed on it. And he's, uh, installing the valve on it for the, I don't know. And another couple weeks while.
Good deal. Okay, well, congratulations, that's a great deal that we got the grant, so that's wonderful. So, all right, thank you. Is there anybody else out there that wants to talk? Do you see anybody? No? Okay. Cindy, did you have anything else, or anything you'd like to say, or go ahead?
Just a quick thing, just sharing.
Sure.
So I think I shared with you before that the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, that we call OGR, had a COVID response grant kind of program that they've been going through in, in phase two. We got $250,000 to help with low to moderate income job retention. Um, we did 15 business loans, which impacted 55 jobs retained in the county, so we were really happy to get through that. They've come around with round three now, and, uh, again, they're offering up to $250,000 that could be used towards mental health services, childcare, food banks, subsidies payments, um, and again, you could do a job retention program through loans or grants. So I asked the commissioners on Monday if, if they would give us their blessing to try to come up with another focus area again, to apply, and they said, yeah, so I'm kinda getting with the folks that I need you to figure out what that focus area is and apply, so we have to have proposals due in the end of January, so we're working on that. So if there's specific areas, like those that I mentioned, that you're hearing about in the community, that you feel like we should try to focus on, I appreciate hearing your thoughts.
Okay. All right, thank you. Guess we have no public here, so I guess no public comment. All right, we'll move on then to, um, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion been made in seconds to approve the minutes for November 12th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Additional appropriations, or are you gonna go over those?
The additional appropriations in front of you are all related to the CARES Act funding that the response team had put together prior to the change in the state's handling of the reimbursement. So these were the amounts that were in process, ready to be submitted for, uh, various different pieces of equipment, supplies, et cetera, uh, when the, uh, at the point when that changed. And so all the money that was left allocated for Park County was returned in salaries to the general, well, eventually to the general fund. So we had made the commitment to the group that when they applied that, got the money back, that then we would, could, you know, handle the items that they had already determined. So from that, you have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, is that right? Seven. Circuit court for $31,292.16, I believe that was for the sound system in the courtroom. General fund ambulance, medical supplies of $118,646.58. Equipment maintenance at $15,095. Building maintenance, $46,558. Vehicle maintenance in 1952. Uh, the courthouse security officer, general fund sheriff's department, $24,000. That may get reimbursed by another grant that Chris is working on. The jail, $940.04, and emergency man, management equipment maintenance of $6,781.59. That's what we have in front of us.
Any questions about that, or concerns?
Still move. Sorry.
Motion been made in seconds to approve the additional appropriations, all in favor?
Aye.
Don't forget to send those pretty quickly, because that deadline's coming up.
Uh, we have transfers before you.
All right, so several of these, I know something about, there's a few at the end that the auditor can talk about that I haven't been briefed on, but local health trust, uh, there's three here to the part-time nurse line, and that's for the additional hours, comp time that the prior nurse accumulated, um, and to get that position out to the end of the year funded, uh, at, uh, 29 hours, $38 an hour, as discussed earlier. So there's $5,500 from clinic supplies, $4,000 from travel, and $500 from office supplies. Those all three deal with that. Uh, the sheriff reported that, uh, there would be $10,000 for his vehicle out of the budget, those two transfers for prisoner meals to vehicles, and prisoner medical dental to vehicles, coverage for that.
The latter from probation in there, about they're wanting to try to hold on to that if they ever get to do an active shooter training, which, of course, they'll lose their appropriation at the end of the year.
Okay, so that's the probation transfer. Sheriff's jail officers, part-time cook, I believe you just came up short because your full-time cook had been out some, and you'd been using the part-time one's more, right?
Yeah, she got more than you in the deficit.
Right. Surveyor evidently a little short in travel money.
Correct.
Both of those are to travel, right? agenda shows one.
Yeah, it's in the rub right now.
Then the extension, uh, looks like they're short on office supplies money.
Right, and Chris, he called yesterday saying that they had lost supplies and equipment due to this COVID, COVID stuff, or this effect of the office that they could operate, so we were requesting for a change for, and drop the supplies to them at the grid.
Okay. And the last one's.
On the highway.
Highway, foreman to administrative, is it a straight-up assistant? The last one's the highway foreman to administrative, so it's a straight-up assistant.
Okay, is there any questions?
I do. I have a question on the last one. I realize that we're, push the rest of these off. You've already said that earlier before we started. So let me on the last one.
On the last one is due to the encumbrance. There wasn't enough money yet to get it due to the encumbrance.
The entire, in the last five years, the entire amount appropriated to that position was encumbered every year.
It has been incorrect every year.
Well, you can only encumber the appropriation amount, right? And if that is all paid out over a period of five years, have we been wrong that long?
I'd have to look, but I would believe yes. Because we've always done split pays.
I know, I understand, I understand that, and I don't want to get into that.
So that's gonna be better from here on out, so don't lose.
I don't want to get into the whole split pay thing right now in, in detail, but, um, if you appropriate X amount of dollars to a position or to a salary line, and you pay that out at whatever frequency you desire, okay? At the end of the year, whatever time, whatever money's left and time served that hasn't been compensated for is encumbered. Correct? All right, and over a period of time, you may get back and forth a little bit, all right? So you're gonna be a rounding error off here, rounding error off there. But in the end, over that time, you have whatever that salary is per year, and if every one of those dollars is paid out over time and encumbered. Now, if you leave some on the table and didn't encumber it, that's a different story. But from what my research shows is that every year we encumbered the balance left, then that position has been paid entirely what it was due. Now, it may have been paid a little bit early. It may have been paid incorrectly in a split pay at some point. I mean, that is, it's unfortunate. I agree with you. Um, but you can only encumber what's left every year. And if that's been done year after year after year, there is nothing to transfer into it, or you're increasing the salary by that much money.
Well, the salary ordinance is clear. You think whoever, it cannot be paid more than the salary ordinance says.
Correct.
I mean, that, I mean, you're breaking the law if you do that, so, you know, if, if that's the case, why, you know, it'll have to be, if we, even if we approve it, which I'm not sure we're going to, why, we'll need to check that and make sure at the end that if it's, they're overpaid, why, then it either comes out of, it comes back somehow. It's gotta be repaid. So, you know.
Are you saying we've overpaid somebody, John, or am I?
No, I, not yet. I mean, you may very well, if you approve this, if you approve this transfer, you may overpay them. I, I'm not sure whether we have or not, we will or not.
They're not, because I went through and I audited every, every person. They're not overpaying.
Well, something's not right. Yeah, at this point.
And I also left off, um, I've got to put the transfer sheet in there for the council and, and the commissaries for my clerk line.
Those are, that's legitimate. You didn't get it encumbered.
Didn't give them.
It's absolutely.
Well, and then that, that's different. That's different, and that's, that's understandable, and we're fine, and we're fine with that. We're fine with that.
Those positions, um, flat supervisor, probation admin, that paid out vacation time or will pay out.
And you'll have that.
Those are legitimate. Those, absolutely. Agree with you a hundred percent.
You'll have that.
The ones that were fully encumbered, year after year after year, are not. I'm, it's, it's, it's a tough sell to tell me that you're then gonna move, that we're gonna wanna move more money into it because we encumbered everything. And that's, that'll lead to an overpayment.
I mean, we don't.
All I'm trying to do is keep you out of that.
We don't want anybody to be underpaid.
Absolutely not.
Because, you know, we got, we go by what the salary ordinance says. The salary ordinance is what you're to be paid. So I don't know how we go from there, or how we fix that, or... How many more pays do you have between now and?
I got two more pays for the year of the twenty-twenty budget. I've got the one coming up December, the twenty, twenty-first, and then we've got the January the fourth.
Which will be, is that a split, is that one the split? No.
That's the last one.
Those are the two fulls, and then that's it?
Yes. Then we start on the twenty-one budget on the second pay in January, and when we do.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Fifteen.
When we start on the twenty-one budget that is gonna be for days work, December the twentieth through January the second, they will get the full salary amount on January the fifteenth. So when they get their check on January the fourth, that's for the days that they worked, December the sixth to December the nineteenth, and then they will receive that pay for the end of the year for the twenty-twenty, for twenty-twenty.
Are you sure the workdays on that are right? Because I thought that, I thought that with, uh, when the board of the council advised to do it this way, that it was the days up to that Friday of that pay. So you weren't paying in, in advance of work. It was being paid, uh, much closer than two weeks back.
What I've done is I've continued the commission schedule. It's like I have, we didn't have a meeting.
I'm just asking, because that's the way I understood their, that's the way I understood their thing, but the day's work part's not as, we're paying a salary, so.
Right. The only thing is if they have, if they have not been received on January the fourth, I need to go in there and audit, make sure they received all their twenty-twenty. If they did not, then, um, I'll have to go back to the state board council and find out what to do. And it could be doing additional.
Well.
Because we will be audited.
I, absolutely. We're gonna be audited, and I, uh, you and I differ on our opinion on how that audit will go based upon what direction we weren't, we're gonna go here. And, uh, my opinion is, is that if you do all those transfers, then you will have overpaid everybody by that amount based upon, now, in, in the exception of the cases where there are encumbrances that were missed, which we talked already here a little bit about, um, where there's been some payouts to be done for a person leaving or whatever. Those are certainly absolutely understandable. But the ones that were paid, held the position, encumbered everything from two thousand and nineteen that was left, and paid the whole salary for twenty-twenty, may be short on the fourth of January because they were overpaid on the fourteenth of February. And why? That's, that's neither here nor there. You know, calculation was made. It was attempted, and maybe we missed it. And, uh, it varies wildly. Some are exactly right within pennies. Uh, Randy was one that was within pennies, ambulance services within pennies, but there are some that aren't. And, but you also go look at, if you go look at how they got paid over that period of time, that pay on the fourteenth of February is not that much larger than the rest of them. But the ones that are off by a lot, that one is much larger. The, the catch-up. So.
The first pay in January of twenty-twenty was a split, right?
No, that was the first pay in January of twenty, of twenty-twenty was a two nineteen budget.
Okay, that was all nineteen money. There were, there was no twenty-twenty money, money in that first. We fund the position for X number of dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if you take those gross pays, add them up, I don't care how it was divvied up, if those equal what that position pays, should be it.
I have not changed the schedule. The schedule has been all the way that it has been.
I, I don't, don't care about the schedule. I don't care. But if January the second, the first day of work was out of twenty-twenty money, that's what you're saying.
January the, the second.
We, we didn't, we didn't carry on in nineteen, so just add up the grosses that were taken out of twenty-twenty if that's equal to the.
That's what I've done.
Then it, it should, should come out. I mean, it, it, can't, can't think it's gotta be that difficult. I, I don't know. We've got ledger sheets and day work and all that.
You'll have to come up there to the office and I can show you the documentation.
I'll be more than happy to come up and just add, add up all the gross pays and figure out which money to come out. It should equal whatever the salary ordinance says.
Well, this has been going on for five years.
It can't be anything else.
Uh, what, yeah, what, what is new if it's been going on five years? If that's the case.
It's always been a split pay.
I was gonna say, have we never.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed, so what's the concern if it's been going on for five years?
We have ran each of the salaries for the employees, and some of them, like you said, really come out to the penny. But there's others, if you start with the pay and you take out the first pay, because it was paid from nineteen's budget, and then if you take out the days that were paid on the second check of nineteen's budget, some of the accounts as of January fourth, they won't equal what they should have been paid from twenty-twenty. They're a little bit short.
That, that is correct, and that's the, that's the nature of these transfers, right? But one unnamed position here, okay? And this particular position matches the requested transfer that was on our agenda earlier in the week. Okay, so on the first pay of twenty-twenty, the last full pay of two thousand and nineteen, they were paid one thousand thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. On the second one, which would have technically been the split pay, it was one thousand forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Now, if you did away with the split pay in your first pay of that next year, they were underpaid by twenty dollars and two, and twenty cents, okay? However, there's still an encumbered amount left of six hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents if you didn't apply it there. The next pay was a thousand sixty-one fifty-four, which was the, every week thereafter, with the exception of the fourteenth of February, where that individual was paid eighteen hundred and four dollars and sixty-two cents. If you apply the remaining encumbrance to that amount, that position was still overpaid one hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents at that point right there. Okay, they're ahead, all right? From that point forward, they're paid a thousand sixty-one fifty-four, all the way down through the twenty-first, which is the, the next pay, which leaves one more on the fourth. From that point, you have the amount that was appropriated to that line in the salary ordinance. You have the encumbrance. The encumbrance has been dealt with in the first three pays, first four, sorry. The final check would be nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents, which is a hundred and three dollars and seventeen cents underpay because they were overpaid a hundred and twenty-three dollars on the fourteenth of February and were underpaid twenty dollars in the, on the seventeenth. Sum of that difference is a hundred and three dollars and seventeen cents. They were overpaid a hundred and twenty-three dollars on the fourteenth of February. They've got it. I don't like it. I don't like the fact that any of these positions are gonna be short, but the math says that they have been compensated. You only have the amount of the encumbrance and the amount in the salary ordinance to apply to the position. That's it. If you didn't encumber enough, that's a different story. We can deal with that. But you can't encumber more than the remaining balance in a salary line.
Correct.
You can't. It's not there to, to do it, or you change the salary ordinance and you pay the person more. That's all there is.
So you take the encumbrance.
If the encumbrance was done incorrectly, fine. You have two examples that you gave that with your, with the, with some clerical things, that they didn't happen. Okay, we missed them, so fix that problem. If you go back and look over a period of time in one of these positions over five years, that remaining balance was encumbered every year. There's nothing left to transfer to. It's, it's an overpayment.
And you're going by the transaction history?
Mm-hmm. Five years.
And when you go through the transaction history, the first transaction history will be the last budget, and then the second transaction history is part of last year's budget.
And then you also have in the transaction history an encumbrance. You pull all trans types, right, the amount that was encumbered. And then if you go back and look at the last year's budget status report at the end of the year, you have a remaining balance. And if those two numbers match, you encumbered the remaining balance, right? So at this example, it's sixteen hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-four cents encumbered. If the budget status report at the end of the year last year on Jan, on December thirty-first says that amount left in this particular line, that's all you can encumber, correct?
If there's enough money to encumber, but what happens in the past that's been still bald and hasn't been like that? If you look at the past, there's a lot of that harm.
Well, we dealt with all of that stuff, the past deal, and did a catch-up, if you recall, last December.
So when we'll do, the, the audit will show whether we are or not.
Yes, it will.
So you have your choice. You can approve that transfer, and if, if there's an overpayment, why, then it falls to the auditor and that sort of thing to make it right, or you can do nothing, whatever you all wanna do. I think you've heard the arguments, so.
Well, it appears to me that a simple audit would, would, uh, straighten this out. So there's an option for a motion to accept this, and then if it needs corrected at a later time.
Would be a clawback.
It'd be a, be an adjustment.
Is that your, is that your comment, or is that, is that a comment, or is that a motion?
Motion.
So basically, you're saying, well, just, your motion is to approve all of the transfers, then?
Well, yeah, because it, like Jamie said, if it's, if it's, it's a simple logical audit.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking so that we know what we're voting on, so I, yeah.
That's my motion.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure.
I second you.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
Okay, let's move on. Reappropriation defense. Got it.
Motion to approve reappropriations for the, uh, MBH for, uh, truck accident with the deer and for the public safety reimbursement deductible on the torses that got damaged or stolen.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see, committee reports. I don't know that we didn't make. Paying zoning.
Uh, we only had one item of business that was to approve the various on the zoning. Uh, it's behind the marathon station, Lake Mar, or they're gonna build some additional storage units across the road from where we're already at. So that was it.
Courthouse Security did not meet. Uh, in your package, you have, we did this for the Rockville Library. They're required, Monizuma is required to designate a fiscal body, which they're designating the Park County Council as their fiscal body. Uh, we'll have to have a, basically, a motion and a second that we acknowledge the, um, naming, naming us as the fiscal body.
Still move. Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, you have your meetings, your promos, your meeting schedule in your packet. Uh, later, Veterans Day is.
On Thursday.
Is on Thursday, so we're gonna have the meeting then on, they didn't change the Thursday. It'll be on Friday.
Who's?
Fri, the twelfth is on Friday.
Oh, okay.
With Thursday being the eleventh. Thursday's the eleventh, Veterans Day, so it'll be, in November, it'll be Friday the twelfth. Are you all right with the budget hearing times, or did you, you wanted, they're all subject to check? They're all subject to check.
Nah, there's nothing in there at this point, so let's just leave that like it is. It's a lame for August and hope that works.
Okay.
So when we pick a date later on in August?
Yeah, we'll pick a date later on in the year, you know? If they delay the revenue forecast and all that stuff again, then God knows where we'll end up, but I'd like to aim for August.
You're right.
At least get the first one in in August.
Okay. Take that.
We're going to reach, we're going to start in late December.
Oh, good. Good thing you reminded me that, I had it written down, but, uh, we normally schedule a year-end meeting just in case we need it. Uh, I have in mind December twenty-ninth, which is a Tuesday, nine AM.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. We may or may not have to have it. Maybe the Sentinel could help us out by putting it in there that we're scheduling that, please.
Get it there, but.
Yeah, nine AM here, we will let you know probably that Monday, the twenty-eighth, about whether or not we're going to need it. I hope we don't, but something may come up that we have to have it. We'll cancel if there's nothing, um, if there's nothing needed. Congratulations.
Got to clean up.
Anything else?
I do, I, I, hang on. I do think that the four transfers that we've talked about here, that we know are legitimate, need to get approved before you get out of this meeting. The two for your commis- council commissioners and the probation and the flat supervisor one. So if you have those. We should probably approve those because those are, those absolutely should happen. Two encumbrances that got missed and two payout vacations and that, that needs to be done. We can argue until we're both in face about the rest of them.
Okay, so on the commissioners line, the one thousand fifteen, day oh one, page fifteen hundred, the clerical line, two hundred and sixty-one, point sixty-five.
Correct.
And the council line?
Council line. One thousand forty-one oh one, fifteen hundred.
Two hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
Right.
And what's the other one, just probation?
The auditor, uh, your, uh.
Probation's two thousand.
You can do the probation one.
Probation's eight hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Okay. That was the payout of vacation time for, uh, Rhonda, Live and Good, and then that position was filled immediately.
What was the other one?
Uh, the flat supervisor.
And we have to turn it around.
You had that one in there. Seven hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents. To your department. There, you added on that page.
Yeah, seven hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents.
And your first and fourth deputy, one of the positions that were rotated around a few times, those might think should be done too.
And some of them, don't, don't.
Done either? Alright. So the flat supervisor position, seven forty seventeen, the probation one and the two, the council and commissioners clerical transfers, those four. Everybody all right with?
We've got to be cleaned up.
I'd move to approve those four transfers.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Motion made and signed it, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you've got stuff to sign. I, wait, I've got one other thing here, hold on a second. In reading this material from the Monazuma Library, they had their appointment stuff in here too, and apparently they never received the, uh, when we made the appointments, because the appointments, well, for one of them, for, um,
Valentine.
Valentine, it started in January of two thousand and twenty, and, um, they reference in the letter that they would like these signed again. So I'm going to go ahead and sign them unless there's an objection.
Yeah.
So, so there's good news.
So, yeah, I don't think that's an issue, but I, I don't want to sign them without you not being aware, possibly. So I'll do that. Is there anything else? Yeah?
Yeah, this is, uh, my last regular meeting. Uh, if we have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, I'll, I'll try to be there, but, uh, I appreciate the time I've spent the last eight years serving the people of Park County and enjoyed working with my, uh, my fellow councilmen and elected officials.
Thank you.
So thank you.
We appreciate your service, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.